Call the meeting to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Belsley.
Here.
Dobbs.
Here.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Here.
Newhouse.
Here.
You have a call.
May we do the pledge allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There are no public hearings tonight, neither are there any special presentations or special reports. Are there any, anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment? Gentlemen in the back.
My name's Ralph Mattia, 430 East Edgewood, Morton, Illinois. And in full disclosure, I'm a member of the American Legion and treasurer of the Knights of Columbus. I'm here to speak about the ordinance 1327 on raffles. I'm speaking strictly on my own, but from my experience with our raffles at the Knights of Columbus. But I think what I have to say probably relates to a lot of other raffles. I'm not here to nitpick. I'm not here to criticize. What I'm looking for is maybe some modification to this so that we could all operate in a legal manner, that you'll be able to regulate us and we operate legally. I just want to point out a couple of things. I didn't find out till tonight that this is fairly common language. So, I'm not a lawyer. I didn't read the Illinois code, or federal code, or any best practices, but just some things came out to me that kind of impact the way we handle our raffles. And I'd ask for some clarification, maybe some clarification within the ordinance. I direct you to 335, area limitations of sale or chances. And it says that the raffle chance that deals with no persons or organizations shall conduct or operate raffle licenses pursuant to this chapter outside the corporate limits of the village. Here's our problem. We, we have members that come from communities other than Morton. We have East Peoria, Tremont, Mackinac. We also have members in Florida, things like that. Well, we, when we do our raffles, we give out the tickets and we hope our volunteers will sell them to others. So, there could be cases where people in Mackinac are selling to their neighbors. According to this, I think that would be illegal, that we'd have to sell everything we sell and any conduct of the business. So, if our, if our raffle manager who happens to live in Mackinac were to call someone from his home to see if they could turn the tickets in, or the money in, or they needed additional tickets, it seems to me he'd be in violation of the law. And we certainly don't want that. So, I'd like some clarification on that, if you could. Application, 336C. And it talks about name, address, telephone number, social security number, date of birth of organizations, presiding officer, secretary, et cetera, et cetera, that are responsible for the conduct and operation of the raffle. Well, maybe I'm reading this too broadly, but the operation of raffle includes people who are selling the tickets. When you're trying to sell 1,000, 2,000, 3,000 tickets, you know, at a dollar apiece, you need more than one or two people to do it. And quite frankly, a number of our members have told me that they're not going to sell tickets if they have to give up their personal information. They've questioned the security of that information, what it's going to be used for. So, once again, I don't know if this is part of the state law that has to be in there, but the people are asking me, why do they have to do it? And they're concerned about the security of the information. And quite frankly, I think, at least with some of our members, they won't participate if they have to give up their personal information. Moving on to part G, it says a raffle shall not exceed 180 days. Well, some of our 50/50s don't even last an hour. Some of our raffles may last two, three months at most. The problem I see with this, if we want to do renovations to our hall, we're going to need significant money. And we've been talking about a raffling, a car. Knowing the way our organization works and the speed at which some of our volunteers volunteer, there may be a need for more than 180 days. My question on this, I understand the purpose of this, I really do. My question on this, is there any way that someone who's going to raffle a car, raffle a house, certainly, I don't think we would, but raffle a car can come before the board and seek an extension of time? If it can be, it can be. If it can't be, I guess we have to operate that way. This is just, maybe just peculiar to us. Number K, it says, you know, copies of the applicant's organization founding documents. We have a almost 60-year-old document that's in a frame. It's a large document on the wall. Can some kind of accommodation be made that somebody be authorized by the village to come over and see that? We do have a charter, so that we don't have to lug that off the wall into a car and bring here. Now, I know that's peculiar to us, but believe me, it's, if we had to do it every so often, that thing would get ruined. Moving down to 339, and once again, this may be the state law. It says a person of felony, professional gambler, person of good, you know, they have to be good, they have to be of good moral character. That's great, and I understand that. But quite frankly, when I go to church at Blessed Sacrament, I don't even know who's sitting next to me in the pew, or in front of me, or behind me. I don't know, you know, how do we know that a member isn't a past felon, that, you know, that a member is of good moral character? So, don't know how we would, how we would know that stuff. Moving a little bit down, contact of the raffles, 3311B. No person except a bona fide member of the licensee may participate in the management of, or operation of the raffle. Unfortunately, both organizations I belong to have restrictions on membership. The American Legion has one that's set by Congress as to who can be a member. The Knights, it's been established a long time ago, and unfortunately, it's men only, and it's Catholic men only, over the age of 18. But we have, quite frankly, we have volunteers who help us with many of our events and help us with our raffles that by our charter, by our organization, can't be members. So, I guess it's telling me that they can't participate and help us out in this matter. Once again, the E has to be within the village. We question why. You know, we do a vocational raffle, where we raise money for religious seminarians, things like that. And we have members, quite frankly, we contact the members we know who are going to, you know, contribute to the cause. And we have a lot of members that live out of state, that are retired, that contribute to the cause. So, we'll be mailing them to Florida and things like that, and we'll get money back from there. But the question is, where is that thing taking place? Is it taking place in Cankey Key, in Springfield, in Morton? Is it taking place in Naples, Florida? It's unclear to us. F causes us a problem because we like to operate as much as possible in the open and as transparent as possible. So, we have our drawings at our meals. Okay, so at a fish fry, or a turkey dinner, or, you know, a ham dinner, a steak dinner, whatever, we'll have it there. Well, we can't guarantee that every person under 18 years old is there with a parent or guardian. My grandson may be there. I'm not his parent or guardian. We have kids from the high school that may have gone to Blessed Sacrament, or friends of kids who went to Blessed Sacrament who come to our meals. You know, some 16, 17, 18-year-old kid, I guarantee is not there with their parents. And yet, this says we can't hold the raffle. So, if we have to have that raffle at a time and place specific, we can't tell you that we're operating legally, because I don't know who's related to who. Moving on, once again, this causes problems, you know, raffle managers, 3312. It says that, you know, this person can do this stuff, but, or on the bonding, I believe it's on the bonding. And the problem is, you can vote to not bond the person, but only by unanimous vote of the members of the licensed organization. I know you all vote unanimously, but our organizations are not unanimous at times. So, once again, that causes a problem for us. Record keeping. We don't have a problem keeping records. We do bingo in Peoria, have been doing it for years in raffle. We file our state taxes and our federal taxes, and we keep separate checking account and everything else. But what this is telling me is the person who accounts for the grocery receipts and expenses, net proceeds from the operation of raffle should not be the same person who accounts for other revenues of the license. Well, what better person to handle this part of our operation than the person who's already handling our raffles and bingo and things like that? So, once again, it's, we can work around it, but it just kind of doesn't make sense. D says the records have to be open at a reasonable, you know, for public inspection, inspection at a reasonable time and place. We're, you know, we're not opposed to that, but, you know, I assume reasonable must mean business hours Monday through Friday? I'd like some clarification as to what that means, because, you know, I certainly know how to be there at 3:00 in the morning on a Sunday showing somebody our records. Prize limitations. Once again, this is not going to affect us, but it could. And that's $4,000, or $40,000 limitation. My good friend used to be superintendent of schools in Lincolnway School, or, you know, Lincolnway School District. And their educational foundation raffles off a house. If somebody were to raffle off a house in this community, and once again, it won't be us, is there some way that they can come before the board to seek a very, you know, variance on that? And the last thing I have is just penalties. And it says, any of the requirements of this chapter constitutes a violation, and any person, doesn't say organization, person, it'd have to pay a fine of $50 to $750. Once again, I don't object to the fines. I don't object to the numbers. The problem is, the person who's running this operation, I don't see how they can have control. They give the tickets to somebody, that person goes out there to sell, they give them to their cousin, their cousin goes, it gets so far down the line that I find it hard for the person who's managing this thing to actually know who's doing what out there. So, once again, I wonder if there's any way that maybe instead of the person being fined, find the organization? Because if some, if you have a volunteer, they're not going to volunteer if they're facing this type of fine. So, maybe, if it's possible, can that be changed to the organization paying the fine? I thank you for your time and appreciate everything.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? There being no one else, we'll move to the consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull either the minutes or the approval of the bills on the consent agenda? No one would like to do so? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Shall move, Your Honor?
Second.
Call it.
Belsley.
Yes.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes. Any discussion? Call it.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Village clerk.
Nothing to that, Your Honor.
Village administrator.
Tonight, I'm asking for approval to transfer $84,000 from the Capital Projects Fund to the General Fund, and $601,000 from the Capital Projects Fund to the Water and Wastewater Depreciation Fund. And this is a little different than we usually do. We're usually transferring into the Capital Projects Fund, but these are reimbursements from both the school district and the park district. We're doing those joint projects together, so they're just paying their portion.
May I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Second, please. Any discussion or questions?
Call it. Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs. Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Village clerk.
Nothing to that, Your Honor.
Village administrator.
Tonight, I'm asking for approval to transfer $84,000 from the Capital Projects Fund to the General Fund, and $601,000 from the Capital Projects Fund to the Water and Wastewater Depreciation Fund. And this is a little different than we usually do. We're usually transferring into the Capital Projects Fund, but these are reimbursements from both the school district and the park district. We're doing those joint projects together, so they're just paying their portion.
May I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Second, please. Any discussion or questions?
Call it. Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Village clerk.
Nothing to that, Your Honor.
Village administrator.
Tonight, I'm asking for approval to transfer $84,000 from the Capital Projects Fund to the General Fund, and $601,000 from the Capital Projects Fund to the Water and Wastewater Depreciation Fund. And this is a little different than we usually do. We're usually transferring into the Capital Projects Fund, but these are reimbursements from both the school district and the park district. We're doing those joint projects together, so they're just paying their portion.
May I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Second, please. Any discussion or questions?
Call it. Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs. Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Village clerk.
Nothing to that, Your Honor.
Village administrator.
Tonight, I'm asking for approval to transfer $84,000 from the Capital Projects Fund to the General Fund, and $601,000 from the Capital Projects Fund to the Water and Wastewater Depreciation Fund. And this is a little different than we usually do. We're usually transferring into the Capital Projects Fund, but these are reimbursements from both the school district and the park district. We're doing those joint projects together, so they're just paying their portion.
May I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Second, please. Any discussion or questions?
Call it. Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Planning and zoning officer.
One item tonight, Your Honor, regarding our enterprise zone. I included in the agenda a memo, kind of giving you some of the details regarding this. And in short, we need to reapply for our enterprise zone. End of the year, our application will be due. There are 97 zones in the state of Illinois, and 49 of them will have to reapply at the end of the year. So, it won't be just those 49, but it will be any other community that currently does not have an enterprise zone but wishes to have one will be going for one of those spots. Jointly, we've had a couple of meetings with East Peoria, Washington, Tazewell County, and Pekin to see what the feasibility would be if we were to join forces, I guess you would say. In other words, it sounds like maybe Pekin and Tazewell County currently share an enterprise zone. We may be joining with them, and so instead of two zones being given out there, there would be one. It will improve our chances, plus the criteria that these zones are going to be rated on. There are 10 criteria, of which we won't meet some of them. Pekin has some of those things, so it would behoove us to be with them, because we don't have mines, abandoned mines here. They do.[1364.13] There's more utilities in the ground. It's just taking us longer to install this, so we feel this is an appropriate fee going forward.
Any comments? I guess we should have a motion anyway.
Second, Mr. Newhouse.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Trustee Kaufman.
One item tonight, Your Honor, regarding our enterprise zone. I included in the agenda a memo kind of giving you some of the details regarding this. And in short, we need to reapply for our enterprise zone. End of the year, our application will be due. There are ninety-seven zones in the state of Illinois and forty-nine of them will have to reapply at the end of the year. So it won't be just those forty-nine, but it will be any other community that currently does not have an enterprise zone but wishes to have one will be going for one of those spots. Jointly, we've had a couple of meetings with East Peoria, Washington, Tazewell County, and Pekin to see what the feasibility would be if we were to join forces, I guess you would say. In other words, it sounds like me, Pekin and Tazewell County currently share an enterprise zone. We may be joining with them and so instead of two zones being given out there, there would be one. It will improve our chances plus the criteria that these zones are going to be rated on. There are ten criteria of which we won't meet some of them. Pekin has some of those things, so it would behoove us to be with them because we don't have mines, abandoned mines here. They do, and there are some other ones. We're working with a firm that does this application process for us, at least a part of it. Each community would pay their fair share based on the number of square miles that our zone encompasses. So what we would like to do before we get too much further into this is get your permission to do that. We would still, anybody that's within the village of Morton and in our enterprise zone that has a project, they would still submit their application to me. I would then enter that information into the Illinois Department of Revenue website and get the ball rolling so that they'd get their enterprise zone certificate. There would be one administrator that would do like an annual report for the entire zone. So that's kind of the whole program in a nutshell. But before we go any further, I need to get your permission to do so.
We need a motion to approve? Mr. Davies, does this need to be under a motion or just consensus?
I think a consensus is what you're looking for, isn't it? There's really not much to vote on here.
Just a comment, I worked with Mr. Spangler on this and related issues. First blush, it appears counterintuitive. Why would we want to join him and somebody else when we want? But the truth of the matter is that, given the circumstances that exist now, our chances of being approved are enhanced by joining forces with adjacent communities. My view, it makes sense to do it consistent with economic development objectives. We've had an enterprise zone in Morton since the eighties. It's been highly beneficial to existing businesses and to businesses that may wish to enter the area. Yet I would suggest that Mr. Spangler be directed to proceed as he sees fit and at some point where it becomes appropriate for us to pass a resolution or there needs to be an ordinance that then we would have a formal vote. In the meantime, this is a smart move.
Any other commentary?
Yeah, you know, from the little bit that I've been talking about this with the EDC and some other things, it's kind of interesting that it's not just a given that the state of Illinois is just going to blanket these things and re-up everybody, so that's why it really is important to be talking to other communities, see which one's going to be the best fit for us and make sure that we can work together to increase our chances because it's undeniable how important it is for our continued development and our retail, you know, all of the different things that are going to be happening. So it's very important that, from my perspective, that we continue to take a look at that and give it our best shot.
We've had an enterprise zone since nineteen eighty-six and, as you said, it's been successful. But going forward, that criteria alone means absolutely nothing. It doesn't help us, it doesn't hurt us, but it doesn't help us. So by us joining with the local communities, East Peoria and Washington, I think, are looking at doing the same thing. They actually touch, their zones touch each other. So I think it's going to improve our chances.
Anyone else like to comment?
I have a question. And you may have covered this and I missed it, but just to clarify, each community would still retain its own authority in regard to the incentives and tax abatements and that type of thing.
Exactly. Nothing would change, in other words, the abatement that we, we would decide that based on the criteria that is being put together with the school district and so on, that wouldn't change.
Roger, are you looking for a consensus to pursue a relationship with Pekin or to pursue a relationship with Pekin and maybe somebody else?
Right now, it's Pekin and Tazewell County and the possibility Tremont being added into that mix. We're going to meet with them on Wednesday.
Trustee Belsley, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was going to ask, there's forty-nine that are applying of the ninety-seven that exist. Are any of these other surrounding communities also applying or how would that affect us? If they're not applying and we are reapplying, it's just...
Well, it could be, it's broken down over a number of years, so the further into this program you go, the fewer there are going to be available. So there could even be somebody that maybe their zone, they don't have to apply by the end of the year, but they may because, again, there's going to be more available and improve their chances. So locally here, Pekin, Washington, East Peoria, Tazewell County, they all are going to, they're in the same boat we're in. End of the year, they have to have their application submitted.
No, I think it's been a very important economic development tool for Morton over the past several years and I would strongly support this.
Could we perhaps have a show of hands for all those who are in favor of letting Roger pursue a joint relationship? Is unanimous, Roger? Go get them.
Thank you.
Trustee Belsley.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Trustee Dobbs.
I have one thing tonight. The recent winter weather showed us a void in the fire department and I would like to fill that void by purchasing a four-wheel-drive vehicle. It is something we've, Chief Kelly has found one that entirely fits his need. It's used, it's two thousand and eleven, but it's GM certified, so it does have a balance of warranty. And in order to do that, I would like to make a motion to take fifteen thousand dollars from his line item building fund and twenty thousand from his equipment line item and transfer it to a vehicle line item and waive bidding since this is a one-of-a-kind vehicle. It's a used vehicle and approved to purchase of it.
Second? Second by? Who seconded it? Any discussion?
I think it's totally appropriate. We need it for hauling hoses, training, and we're going to have a three-lane highway coming to Morton. If we have any problems on the expressway, we need four-wheel-drive vehicles there for protection of citizens. This community's grown and we need more four-wheel-drive vehicles, so...
Can they deliver it before noon tomorrow?
I told them they picked it up tomorrow morning before the snow got here.
I have an eight o'clock meeting, but we didn't see what I did.
And just for the board, when we bring the street budget, we're going to be asking for a four-wheel-drive vehicle in the street department, but believe it or not, we have no four-wheel-drive vehicles.
I was amazed to discover how few four-wheel-drive vehicles are on the entire system.
So the man that manages all of this doesn't even have a four-wheel-drive vehicle to get around. And I drive a four-wheel-drive vehicle. If you want to get around the snowstorm, you better have one.
It's not just the snow, it's potential for natural disaster. Have a period of, you know, bad rain, make accessibility difficult. We could be one step away from a disaster for somebody without having, if something like that happened for lack of a piece of equipment, that'd just be wrong. So I think, thank you, Mr. Dobbs, for taking this up and I support it.
The best thing is it's red, so we don't have to... Yeah, it's even red, so it makes it even better.
And we'll get light bars in the markings and so forth.
And we're buying local.
Yeah, it's a lighthouse building. Did I mention that or not?
No.
Okay. Yeah, it is local, it's a lighthouse building.
Any other comments or questions? Call it.
Newhouse.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
That's all I have.
Trustee Herr.
Yeah, I wanted to just discuss one thing tonight. I had talked to the village attorney Davies here a couple of weeks ago in regards to trying to put together a comprehensive ordinance when it comes to whether it was the raffles or also the video gaming. Now, one of the concerns that had come up when I had asked him about that was the single subject. Is that the appropriate term? I always like to make sure that that's the appropriate term. And so I wanted him to have an opportunity to take a look at that and, you know, give his opinion of what that might mean. In this past week, after doing some research and looking at what that actually could mean for us, if we wanted to make an effort to combine both the raffles and the video gaming, we actually wouldn't have a problem with it. It would be something that we could combine. And in my opinion, it's something that I think we need to consider as a board and put it for a vote. Whether that gets voted down or not, you know, I'm comfortable whatever the outcome might be. But I do actually, just even with the questions that we have about the raffles from Ralph tonight, I don't think that the actual raffle ordinance is ready to be voted on, in my opinion. You guys could differ. I'd like to see an effort and I'd like to make a motion to try to do a comprehensive plan for us to take a look at, obviously not to vote on tonight, but for actually for us to put together a, you know, put together an effort for a combined ordinance and make a motion for that.
Could we do that without it being on the agenda?
Well, I would say at any time a trustee can direct me to prepare an ordinance to bring to the board, which the trustee can then present. And of course, if there's no second, it dies. If there's a second, then it's voted on. So at this point, you don't need to say anything additional. If that's your direction, then I can do so.
I would like to see a combined ordinance for a vote, is what I would like to see.
But we don't have to vote. You can just direct Tom, he'll prepare one, put it on the next agenda.
Do you need a second to prepare?
I don't know. You can just prepare.
Any one of you can ask me in my capacity as corporation counsel to prepare an ordinance for you to bring to the board for discussion. Just like trustee Kaufman talked to me about the raffle ordinance. So we drafted it, he brought it, we've worked on it accordingly.
The only other variation, as I understand it, would be if we have a motion for the raffle ordinance and someone, you'd need a motion and a second to amend the ordinance and that would be a... Is that not correct or is it just better to do it as trustee Herr described? Because in a few minutes, we're going to be talking about the raffle.
Yeah, I mean, you can, a motion can be made to either table it or amend it or you can vote on it. But he just needs to call you and ask you to prepare one for the next meeting.
We've already done that.
He doesn't have to call me.
Yeah, we've already, yeah, we've already done that. I had done that, yeah, I'd already had that.
So we don't really need a vote to do that. Any discussion or comment on what trustee Herr has said? Is that all you had?
That's it.
Trustee Herman.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have resolution number seventeen thirteen regarding the release of executive session minutes. We pulled that off the consent agenda at the last meeting so that we could review those before they're released. And Mayor Rainson and I have reviewed those along with the attorney. And I also took this opportunity while I was reviewing these to go back and review some previous sets of executive session minutes. And there are portions of those that can now be released, the issues that have been resolved are behind us. So, but in this case, the most, I move approval of resolution number seventeen thirteen.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, I guess you better call that.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Trustee Kaufman.
Just one item tonight, Your Honor, concerning the ordinance number thirteen twenty-seven for the Raffles Act. I would move approval of the revised ordinance, Your Honor.
Do I have a second? Did you second that?
Yes, I did.
And then, Your Honor, I'd like the council to go over the changes that have happened this week a little bit, inform the public. We made a few changes since the last meeting. And could you also address some of Ralph's concerns?
Yes, I can do them as we go through them. Probably the first, there's no changes in the first three or four sections. As far as the area limitation, I would say one thing that should underline all of my comments is everyone needs to use common sense. I think we're getting a little too, coming up with some extreme solutions. We're not intending to set a trap for the wary or anything. Most everything in this ordinance is pretty much dictated by the state statute. I could agree, I actually probably would agree with a couple of your comments, but Morton does not have home rule. If the voters would have allowed home rule, then this board would have a lot more power to tailor things to the way its constituency may like it as opposed to the people in Springfield. So for a lot of these things, they really don't have much of a choice. As far as the area limitation, the statute does state that the ordinance is to specify an area. Typically, I think all of the ordinances stated it's to be conducted within the corporate limits. I wouldn't strain that to come up with, well, if I mail a ticket to Cousin Johnny in Carbondale, is that a violation? I can assure you that neither I or Chief Hilliard is going to be too worried about that nor do I imagine the board. The point is, your organization would be conducting it here. That's really where it's taking place. As far as the application, let's talk about C specifically. First off, the law requires that an organization name a raffles manager. If the organization wants to name more than one, that's the organization's right to do so. On the other hand, they don't have to name more than one person. Nobody's going to care if there's six people helping the manager or one. The point is, the state statute requires that. The purpose, I think, is obvious so that the municipality knows who's operating it. I'm willing to say ninety-nine point nine, if not a hundred percent of the ones in the village are done by reputable people, but that's not always the case. So that's why you have that procedure. There has to be at least one. The value of, and the others particulars which we can talk about in a minute are all policy decisions for the board to make which are in the ordinance. The hundred and eighty-day period, that's not cast in stone. I think that's probably, or it was felt that in virtually all cases that would be a sufficient amount of time. In any event, it can't be more than a year because the state says you can't issue them for more than a year. I think it'd be fair to say it'd be our best judgment that a hundred and eighty days should take care of everything. You asked if you can come to the board. I think this board is always very open to listen to the citizens. If it occurs that maybe something needs to be changed due to experience or factors, I'm a hundred percent confident the board will listen and where appropriate, change it. It's all new to us, but I really don't foresee any problems in that area. As far as the persons ineligible, those specifics are from the state statute. I would agree that the term moral charact, good moral character, which is also found in the liquor ordinance, is not the legally precise term you would like, but that's what the statute says. And what it then says is if, say for instance, the head of the particular organization was disqualified because of one of the three specified items, then that organization can't, has a choice, either get rid of him or not have it. The license issue, we've now provided, which is, I think, everybody's expectation, a more streamlined procedure for application. Wendy has been working on an application form and it will, I think, be downloadable off the website, so people will be able to get that. It's straightforward, I don't think it's too complicated, but again, it's required by statute. As far as the conducting of raffles, again, I don't think, I wouldn't be too concerned with trying to come up with too many what-ifs. I think it's going to be pretty clear in all cases where it's taking place. As far as the under eighteen, that's a change from the original draft which said it had to be eighteen. Well, it was pointed out by several trustees that that's probably overdoing it. You have kids at carnivals, you have kids at high school games. Frankly, unless there's some abuse, nobody's going to be asking the kid for an ID or permission slip from their parent. The raffles manager is, again, that will, has to be one by law. An organization may have three or four different kinds of raffles. If they wanted to, they can name a different manager for each one or they can name one manager for all of them. This question about the waiver, I couldn't agree with you more. To me, that sentence makes very little sense, but that's a word for word from the state statute. The village will have in place a procedure for those organizations that want to avoid the cost of a fidelity bond. I think you'll find the village very receptive to working with you. Any waiver that's requested must be approved by the board. So if XYZ company asks for one, there'll be a procedure and then the clerk will present that to the board to say, do you agree to waive the bond for XYZ? The record-keeping, again, that's verbatim from the state statute. And the language you question and commented on, while your comment makes sense, the statute states it has to be done this particular way. The thirty days may or may not be sufficient time, we'll have to see how that works. The statute uses the word promptly. Well, we don't know, I don't know what that means. So we thought it'd be better for people to know the timeframe. If it turns out that's too much, we can adjust it. The prize limitations is a new one, or one we put a specific figure of forty thousand. That seems to be appropriate, but again, I would say, and I think St. Jude does a house over in Peoria every year, so I'm sure if somebody here wanted to do something similar, they can come to the board and the board would make that decision. The chance limitation, in the original ordinance, we had a little, like a sliding scale of so much per ticket, per the value of the prize. That seemed to be overly complicated, so we came up with, just to say, no one chance can be more than a hundred dollars. That might be for something, maybe your car or the foundation. I think they had one. Obviously, probably the vast majority of these will be a dollar. That's just a limit and again, the state statute requires that. As far as the penalty clause, that's in virtually every ordinance we passed. I would go on record as saying I will be surprised if that's ever used. But for the one in a thousand case, you have to have that. Most of our laws are probably created because of one or two bad apples,
My one question would be, the 18-year-old at the bottom of F there on page five, where it says, "Determined only when accompanied by the parent or guardian." What about the PTO carnivals? That's what drove this.
That's the state statute.
Well, I would presume the pair-
Again, we're getting a little picture.
Yes, I think we're going to be pretty liberal on our interpretation. Again, that, those provisions are really set up to, more for an extreme example.
So I've said for years that home rule was a quality-of-life issue, so if we had home rule, we could write these documents more to what our citizens would find more appropriate?
No question about it.
Well, that was my intent on supporting home rule from day one. I've always felt the trustees before us and after us would do the right thing, but it's a quality-of-life issue, and things like that, so.
Well, that's what I always thought, because I've been around a few years, and the board, whether you agree with them or not, is always responsive. The people have a much better chance of getting something done with their local board than they do the people in Springfield. So for what it's worth, I would like some time to, I would love to see the village be a home rule.
Because I would say, it does spend council time and money preparing these documents to get around the home rule, since we can't write it home rule more fluently to what we want.
We're getting a little off the subject there.
Sure, okay.
Thanks.
Well, just trying to answer his question.
Do you have any more?
Yeah, I think each trustee has a document of what the police chief and our village administrator kind of prepared, a document for the application process. Wanted everybody to have one. Changes can be made to it, but something to start with.
Anything else? Trustee Newhouse, do you have any comments to make?
Well, I guess I feel in the interest of the community, it's important that we get something like this enacted, so that people with legitimate concerns, fraternal organizations, civic organizations can conduct their, their programs and sell their tickets. On the other hand, we're being asked to approve something that's basically a gambling document. It makes reference to chance, and chance is the, is the critical mass issue when you're talking about gambling. If you look at video gaming, the maximum bet, I believe, Mr. Village Attorney may confirm $2, maximum payout 500. We're talking about $100 for a chance here, and a maximum payout of 40,000. It is gambling, and I continue to struggle, while I certainly support approving this document, I continue to struggle with the notion that we've defined one form of gambling, said this is inherently beneficent, beneficial to the village, inherently good, and at the other end of the spectrum, said it's inherently bad, and we're not going to permit it. I'm also kind of in a quandary, because, you know, we're being asked to vote on this document, and trustee here has asked for a comprehensive document, which would combine the two, so if we vote on this tonight, what's the point of having a comprehensive document come up? So I'm, I'm struggling a little bit here, as we think it through.
Trustee Belsley?
I'm prepared to vote on the raffle before, the raffle ordinance on before us tonight.
Any other comments?
At this time.
Trustee Dob?
I agree with trustee Newhouse, because they are both gambling, and both of them benefit some of the same people. Our Knights of Columbus, our American Legion, our VFW. And we talk about the nonprofits, well, we got two owners in the audience that probably donated much as their time and efforts into nonprofits as the nonprofits do. And we're telling them they're second-class citizens, and we don't want to allow them. We spend money, like I said before, to keep businesses in town, and we don't want to help our existing businesses. I think we should wait till we get the comprehensive plan.
Trustee here?
I've said my piece, I want to see a comprehensive plan.
Trustee Herman?
Thank you, Your Honor. We're here tonight to discuss the raffle ordinance. I think it's devolving into a discussion on video gambling, which, they are two very separate and distinct acts at the state level. There are very, trustee Newhouse mentioned the spectrum. They are, this is being framed as somehow these two things are somehow equal. There are radical differences, and I can and will elaborate on them, but I am prepared to vote tonight on the raffle ordinance, so our nonprofits can get on with their business.
Any other discussion or comments? All right, we're going to call the question. The question is, should we pass this ordinance now to allow raffles? Call it.
There was a motion made in second to pass this ordinance. I'm sorry, okay.
Dob?
I'll vote no, because I wanted to see the comprehensive plan first.
Here?
I'm going to vote no, because I want to see the comprehensive plan.
Herman?
Yes.
Kaufman?
Yes.
Newhouse?
No.
Belsley?
Yes.
Thanks a lot. Falls to me to break the tie, right, counselor?
That's correct.
I vote yes.
Okay, ordinance passes.
Ordinance passes.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Trustee Newhouse?
Your Honor, we have been asked, once again, to direct the Plan Commission to take a look at an ordinance, and in this case, it's an issue that's come up before in the village relative to exterior, exterior building materials. Trustees will remember that we waived the requirement, the existing requirement, some time ago, for lighthouse automotive to be consistent with the General Motors specification, and attractive facing material, but it doesn't match our requirement for masonry. We made an exception for cracker barrel wood construction. Our, our ordinance is probably a little restrictive compared to other communities. The, is it Steel Workers Union, Mr. Belsley?
Sheet Metal.
Sheet Metal Workers Union, sorry. Sheet Metals Workers Union is acquiring a building on 98, wishes to have, to exhibit the kinds of materials that they work with. They have an attractive metal building material that is, that is used other places widely. And so in this instance, I think it makes sense to direct the Plan Commission, as we have before, to review the use of these materials and recommend whether or not the ordinance should accommodate these kinds of materials. I recommend the move that we approve, or direct the Plan Commission to do so.
Would that have to be done with an actual vote, or just a consensus?
I think we just do it the way we've done before. We just need a consensus of the, of the board.
Anyone want to comment on this?
I, I think, I've looked at those materials, I think it's appropriate to look at it. I do want to make one caveat, though. I've, I know of one company that has used that material on one building, and then used a fake nail-on-brick to go with it. But it also built two other buildings around here locally, and they're all masonry. So as we look at that ordinance, we, we need to be careful that it's used appropriately, so that the village of Morton gets a quality product that the citizens are used to, because probably 15 years ago, this came up, and they used the concrete cement siding as a way to get into the masonry, and then we started having all siding buildings, just because the siding had a little cement in the process. I spoke to Roger about this, but since I spoke to him about it, I just, I like this product, I think it's appropriate for this situation. But we got to be careful that it's just not so loosely used, because they're going to want other building products to go with it, because to build a big building, to get the masonry we expect everybody else to use, you're not going to be able to use of this product. So there's issues there, that they'll have to work through.
Could I have a show of hands of those who would like to see the Planning Commission hold a public hearing on this? unanimous support?
I will so direct them. The other item, Your Honor, is simply the, the follow-up to our mixed-use zoning ordinance presentation. I would like to collect from the trustees, any commentary that they have, any further direction, or one issue was related to access for garbage collection, deliveries, that sort of thing. I think that would be part of the special use consideration, but it could be written into the ordinance. So if, if you have comments tonight, I can write them down, or better yet, if they could be submitted in writing, or if you think that we're ready to vote on it, I will bring it up at a subsequent meeting for vote. But I do need the, the response from the trustees from the last meeting.
I just have one comment. Some citizens have commented that they were concerned about the one parking spot per unit, and I guess, just to make sure, we look at that, in that, fairly, because when you look at a building that might have four apartments above it, more than likely, there could be a married couple or somebody there, and maybe one isn't enough, and they just, they want that looked at, so maybe there's a way that more units in a building, that there's extra space is required, than just one per unit may not be enough. I'm just throwing it out there, to be looked at.
Okay.
That would take away from business, then, too, the business parking.
Correct. I just, I think we need to look at it, because more than likely, once they get going, there might be more than one or two in the building. But we got to start somewhere, so I'm, I'm just making that.
Trustee Newhouse, you were thinking to get their opinions, and then at the next meeting, propose it for a vote?
Well, I, we either need, if we have suggestions about the presentation, and we need to get those back to the Plan Commission, so they can deliberate further. Trustees feel that this is in a form that we're really willing to pass it, with the recognition that, you know, this remains a special use, and each one is going to get looked at anyway, and be under the scrutiny of the Director of Public Works, the Planning and Zoning Officer, before it ever comes to us, then I, I am, I am prepared to recommend that as an ordinance. But I, at this point, I, I want to give everybody, I guess what I'm looking for is your guidance.
Steve, I mean, I think you repeat that again, a little bit, that what people need to be clear about is each one of those is a special use, so each time a potential development or building goes up, they have to come, so, you know, for me, it's a living, breathing document, and I guess, you know, most of our, you know, exceptions in ordinances are, but this in particular, each one is going to be so different, that it's going to be hard to lay down. I understand the concern about it, what a citizen has, but there's no way we can put that onto a developer that it has to be too, because that's going to shut down. That's, you know, that to me, wouldn't, wouldn't make sense.
Historically, that's been reviewed, and any special use, no matter what it is, that's one of the kinds of things that gets, that gets reviewed. So that would be a way of, of handling that, that question.
Right, I think the special use handles that.
And as Mr. Farrell said in the presentation, given the fact that this is a new and a first step for mixed use, we want to retain that special use provision until we're confident that we, that we could build some of those things into permitted uses, not requiring people to come back. But I think, I think that would be the starting point, it remains special use, make sure then we could even put in a provision if need be for site plan reviews, so that, so that it would require the approval of the, of the appropriate person in the village office, Director of Public Works, Mr. Spangler, whomever, to pass judgment on it.
I would recommend procedure, they've done a lot of good, hard work.
Can we get a consensus that this is a good idea? I mean, the concept is really what we're looking at right now, when I, we're saying, I'm seeing all the heads going up and down. So I think as soon as you can produce an ordinance, it'll be something I think everybody will be ready to vote on. And in the meantime, I would encourage everybody to get your, your opinions to the Plan and Commission.
Have any more thoughts given to me, or any of the Planning Commissioners? Probably best, Mr. Farrell. What I will do, Your Honor, is do one final review with the Plan Commission at the next meeting, recap this discussion tonight, ask if there's anything else they want to do before they are ready for an ordinance, and if not, I will have the ordinance for the subsequent meeting.
Great.
Thank you, sir.
They're being, are you wanting to do something over here?
Steve Belsley asked me about, and we kind of skipped over it. On the raffle ordinance, typically, when we pass an ordinance that goes into the codebook, technically, it doesn't take effect until it's duly published. However, in light of the belief, I think, that a lot of organizations are probably going to be starting immediately, rather than wait 30 days, what's appropriate is, is for a motion to be made to publish it in pamphlet form, which will make it effective immediately.
But we'll also get that, that would be online, on our website.
Well, right.
And possibly a downloadable application.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have, that'll be shortly, I think, but.
Do you need a motion?
I do need a motion to authorize publishing it in pamphlet form.
Any discussion? Call it. I don't know. Randy Moon and Jeff. Here?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Kaufman?
Yes.
Newhouse?
Yes.
Belsley?
Yes.
Let me ask the village clerk, how quickly, if I wanted to get a permit to have a raffle, can I come over to your office and see you?
We'll have the application books available tomorrow. They will not be available online for probably a couple weeks, or thereabouts, but if someone comes tomorrow, or, or someone at the office, we'll, we'll take it.
I'll entertain a motion to talk to the chief.
I just want to address that. Part of the process is that after they fill out the application, that that paperwork will make its way to our office, where we will run some inquiries on that, and that will take it, could potentially up to 15 days to do that. So we will try to do it as, as quickly, as expeditionally as possible, but it could take up to 15 days, and by the ordinance, there's up to 30 days that we have to approve on that, or deny. It's a point of order.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Seconded by trustee Newhouse. All in favor?
Aye.